Welcome to the Miss Palia South Dundas Council Meeting with its team and staff and guests for Monday, September 11th, 2023. I'd like to call this meeting to order, let it be resolved, the council rise and reconvene into open session at 6:01 PM. Moved by councillor Smith, seconded by councillor Vino. All in favor? Carried. Let it be resolved that the council direct administration to carry out all actions as specified in our closed session minutes meeting, which precluded this open session. Moved by councillor Vino, seconded by councillor Ward. All in favor? Carried. There any additions, deletions, or amendments to tonight's agenda? Seeing none, I have a motion, be resolved that the council of Miss Palia South Dundas approve the agenda as presented. Moved by councillor Smith, seconded by councillor Ward. All in favor? Disclosure of pecuniary interests and the general nature thereof, anybody disclosing tonight? Councillor Smith?
On the Don Haynes drain, 9B and 9C, I'm a property owner on both of those. Whenever we deal with bylaws, I have to excuse myself.
Thank you very much. Any others? Deputy Mayor St Pierre?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. On 6B plant subdivision, Swank Construction, I'm going to declare conflict as the company I work with, Novatec, or work for Novatec, is representing the civil engineering portion.
Thank you very much. Any other disclosures tonight? Seeing none, move to item number five, adoption of minutes. Let resolve the minutes of the following meetings, August 14th, 2023, and it's closed session for August 14th, 2023. Moved by councillor Ward, seconded by councillor Vino. All in favor? Carried. Okay, moving to number six, public meetings. I have a motion that the public meeting consider a zoning bylaw amendment, the planned subdivision, be opened at 6:03 PM. Moved by councillor Ward, seconded by councillor Smith. All in favor? So as we open the public meeting, and I know our planning consultant will refer to this, but I will remind everyone that anyone who wishes to speak in favor or contrary to any of the proposed zoning bylaw amendments will be given the opportunity to do so. Before you make a presentation, I would ask you to provide your name and address. I am required by the Planning Act advise you that if you do not make an oral presentation or written submission before the proposed zoning bylaw amendments are adopted by municipal council tonight, you will not be entitled to appeal the decision to the Ontario Land Tribunal. If you wish to make an oral submission to the application this evening, we ask that raise your hand and proceed with your comments when called upon. I will now ask our planning consultant, Stephanie Moran, to provide a brief overview of the individual applicant. Following the report, we'll open the floor for anyone wishing to make an oral presentation on the application. Welcome, Stephanie.
Thank you. Good evening, council. All right, so we do have two items for public meetings tonight. The first one we will start with is a zoning amendment, and it's application number Z202303, and it's a portion of vacant land on County Road 2, owned by OPG in Iroquois. All right, so this meeting is being held pursuant to Section 34 of the Planning Act. Any requests to be notified of the decision may be submitted to myself at planner@southdundas.com. This meeting is an open forum for the public and council to gather information, ask questions, and voice any comments and concerns. So I'll start by providing an overview of the amendment, and then followed by an opportunity for the applicant to comment or present. And then following the presentation, there will be an opportunity for comments and questions from the public and from council, and an opportunity for the applicant or myself to address them. A decision may be made later this evening or at a later date. So I just want to go over, reiterate some of the things that Mayor Broad brought up. So a 20-day appeal period begins following the decision. And if a person or public body does not make oral submissions at the public meeting or make written submissions to the municipality before the bylaw is passed, the person or public body is not entitled to appeal the decision of the council of the municipality of South Dundas to the Ontario Land Tribunal. And if a person or public body does not make an oral submission at the public meeting or make written submissions to the municipality before the bylaw is passed, the person or public body may not be added as a party to the hearing of an appeal before the Ontario Land Tribunal unless, in the opinion of the tribunal, there are reasonable grounds to do so. So I'll sort of give you an overview of how municipal planning sort of structured in Ontario. So at sort of the top side, you've got the provincial policy statement, and the most current one that we are using is the 2020 version. It's the statement of the government's policies on land use planning. It applies province-wide and provides clear policy direction on land use planning to promote strong communities, a strong economy, and a clean and healthy environment. And then I will also look at the Planning Act. The Planning Act is sort of the document that tells us what we can do and how we can do it. So a decision of the municipality in respect of the exercise of any authority that affects a planning matter shall be consistent with the policy statements issued. And then at more of a regional level, you've got the county official plan, and that is a document that is put together by the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas, and Glengarry. It outlines a set of goals and objectives for development in the county for the next 20 or so years while having regard for the effects on the social, economic, and natural environment of the municipality. It contains policies to be used for the review of development applications and any other planning decisions. And then what a lot of you probably are familiar with is the zoning bylaw. So the zoning bylaw is a municipality of South Dundas document. It's a bylaw passed by council. The bylaw, the zoning bylaw, controls the use of land in a municipality, community, by designating land parcels with specific land zones. So a bylaw specifies the permitted uses, so if it's commercial or agricultural, residential, and any required standards. So it can be building size and location, setbacks, building height, parking requirements, that sort of thing, in each zone. So zoning bylaws and any amendments to the zoning bylaw must conform to the official plan. And the public works and bylaws to conform with the plan, the Planning Act states that Section 24-1, "Despite any other general or special act where an official plan is in effect, no public work shall be undertaken and except as provided in subsections 2 and 4, no bylaw shall be passed for any purpose that does not conform therewith." So, just sort of getting into the actual application, Z202303. So this is, we're going to talk a little bit about the specifics of this application. So this amendment is in relation to changing the subject property zoning from residential first density holding, R1, to residential fourth density holding, R4, to permit a broader range of residential uses for future development opportunity. The application was submitted with a planning rationale, a concept plan, and a functional servicing report, and they were prepared and submitted by Stan Tech Consulting to inform the application as part of their complete application requirements. So in front of you, you've got sort of that concept plan highlighted in yellow, and that was the, that's the area in yellow that's, that's subject to the application. So I just have a sort of bigger version there. So under the official plan, it is designated residential district within an urban settlement area. So that's what that pink highlights. The blue dashed line is the urban service limit as well, and then you've got a red dashed line, which is an influence area for a closed landfill. And then this is the zoning bylaw. So you'll notice that the whole property, including the land adjacent to it, is zoned residential first density, R1 holding, and the proposal is for it to be residential fourth density, so R4 holding. So upon discussions with the applicant, my proposal would be to leave a strip of residential first density holding directly west of Grove Street to serve sort of as a compatible buffer to the proposed R4 zoning. Now this discussion, the concept plan did include, kind of go back to that, did include a little bit of single detached dwelling lots backing onto existing single detaches, detached on Grove Street. So we, the applicant and I discussed, and we sort of thought that that would be the best way to move forward. It would just be to leave the RS1, or sorry, R1 holding zoning adjacent to the backyards of those on Grove Street. So I have received a few questions related to sort of the timeline of any future proposed development, but as of this time, we haven't received any other planning applications. We did receive one comment from Mrs. Susan Mott of Grove Street, who I did have the chance to exchange a few emails, and she did, she was unable to attend tonight, but she did provide a letter, so I'll just read that to you. "I oppose the bylaw amendment Z202304 in respect to the R4 holding zoning. I would support the recommended amendment that a portion of the property continue to be R1 holding if indeed the R4 holding otherwise passes. Yes, I have a vested interest, given that my property abuts the property under consideration, but I also have a broader interest that existing residents continue to enjoy their properties and neighborhoods. I'm not in favor of allowing R4 zoning for the property as it only allows for apartment buildings as currently proposed by the applicant, but it also allows for much broader uses such as homes for the aged, nursing homes, and retirement homes. The nature of those structures and facilities is very different from existing neighborhoods. The frequency of activity can be 24/7. There is noise from parking lots and from arrivals and departures of service providers and deliveries. There is more lighting and light pollution from the building and parking lots. Apartment buildings share many of those aspects as well. So such uses, such uses would diminish the enjoyment by existing residents of their home and quieter neighborhoods. Should council decide to allow the R4 holding zoning, then I would certainly support the recommendation by community planner Stephanie Moran that a portion of the property directly behind Grove Street remain R1 holding. So that should development proceed, the existing single detached dwellings on Grove Street would back on to other single detached dwellings of a similar density. If approved, this recommendation would mitigate some of my concerns around the continued enjoyment of my own property, but I would remain concerned with the impacts of a broader R4 use on existing neighborhoods. I appreciate the opportunity for my concerns to be noted for the public record, and I do appreciate the advantages of development for community and regret that I'm unable to attend the meeting to hear more informed views of council and planners on this matter." All right, I think this is the last, so this, I just wanted to leave this sort of as the last, the last map, so for any questions or comments that you can reference what I have put forth in my action request on the agenda as well as the bylaw.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. I'll start off with any questions of our planner from council? Questions off the top? Anyone from the audience who wants to make an oral presentation? State your name and your address, please.
Hi there, it's Tim Castle. I'm from Iroquois, Ontario, 10951 Golf Club Road, and I do own property on Beach, which, right there. So it seems like I've been under the impression for a long time that land development is really good for the community. Raise your hand if you think that was the truth. I guess people have been doing their studying like I have been, because I've been doing research online, and it actually says, and I have some articles here that I'll pass out to you if you want to read them, residential development charges lead to hidden taxes for city taxpayers. That was pretty important to me. So any future development is going to cost you, 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 everybody. It's going to come out of your pocket. So you better think before we start passing these huge, big developments, I think this is what, the second one in just a few months that we've heard of? Well, I'm thinking, I hope the council will do some studying, do research online, read these articles, and really think twice before you start thinking that, the old thoughts, you know, oh gosh, you've got to have land development, land development. Well, I don't want to pay for some out-of-town developer to make a few bucks. So I hope you think about us taxpayers before you do that. And I have a lot of questions, like, for instance, have you people, or will you please think about when they strip that land down, what's going to happen to the people along Beach? I know for a fact that the wind comes down there pretty good right now. You strip all those trees out of there, and what's going to happen? The heating bills are going to go up, the snow's going to build up, it's going to cost people along that street a lot more money. Again, please think about the people that are there already. Another thing, what happens about the noise? The 401 has been stripped clean down here, and now we hear the 401 all the time at our house. Noise pollution, that's a concern. Trains, they go right by there. You're going to have noise pollution from them. Please consider the taxpayers that are there now, okay? That's all I ask. Another thing, when it comes to developing land, what's going to happen? Oh, I see in the newspaper last week, we're all going to pay $50,000 to study whether we can supply these new houses, these new developments. That's five bucks out of everybody in town. You know, there's 10,000 people, $50,000, that's five bucks you just gave away for some developer to put in some houses. No, make them pay, make the developers pay. Don't, I, please, I don't want to pay any more taxes. And think about future costs. What's it going to cost to keep it going? What's expansion? All the time. And, oh, by the way, when you do get a quote, what does it cost? Oh, you say $12,000 for a sewer treatment plant. It got to 20,000, I'm sorry, 20 million. Like, you can't just put figures now and say that's what it's going to cost you in the future. You got to really, really think before you start saying, oh yeah, let's double the size of Iroquois, double the size of Mooresburg. Come on, we got to really, really do our homework here, okay? So that's all I got to say is I don't want to pay more taxes for somebody else to get richer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Castle. Comments? Ms. Warren?
Yeah, I can address a couple of those concerns. So anytime that there's a development within 500 meters of the CN tracks, a noise and vibration study is a requirement. At this time, we are only considering the zoning of this property. Future development will come at the public, if it proceeds through a plan of subdivision, a future application and a future opportunity for a public meeting where we have more studies will be a part of that application process.
Thank you. Mr. Allison?
John.
Hold for the mic, hold for the mic, please.
Okay, thank you. Could you explain the dimensions of the remaining residential holding 1?
Yeah. Let me just pull it up. I don't know if you have a copy with you, Mr. Stewie?
That's why I'm asking a question.
That's okay, that's okay. Just one second. That makes sense to me. The zoning bylaw does go straight to the center line of the proposed roadway, so it may be even more than that. My apologies.
Are you looking for the depth of those lots?
Yeah.
They're about 184 feet.
On Grove Street?
On that side, yes.
Okay.
Other side, no.
Okay. So about, yeah, 40 meters plus the... I can't find it, like, maybe during...
Get back to the, Mr. Allison, who asked the question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Certainly, from your drawing and from your conversation, you're proposing is the full length of Grove Street on one side, so one, one row would replicate what's on Grove Street.
Yeah.
Maybe you could get back to us later about the dimensions?
Yeah, I'll take a look during the meeting, and then I can bring it back at the action request.
And I have one other question. As Mr. Castle pointed out, new development does cost a lot of money. What are the options that the municipality has when there's new development, paying for the new development as opposed to burdening the existing taxpayers? Could you explain how that works?
Absolutely.
Ms. Warren?
So through, through the plan of subdivision application process, the, when we're, when we take security for an app, for a property based on their development, we can charge, usually it's between 100% of the estimated cost of the site works, up to 125%, and that's sort of the security that if the applicant were to move forward with the development and, you know, kind of get halfway through, and maybe they go bankrupt, or maybe they disappear, that the municipality can go forward and be able to finish the site works, and then they would have the land to be able to sell off each of the lots. So they sort of go hand in hand that way. We are, one of the things we were looking at through the planning fees a few weeks ago, is that maybe development charges might be something that we can look at in the, in the new year, under the new budget, and development charges are essentially a fee as part of the building permit process, that every new house would have a development charges fee, and then that would go back to providing services at a later date. That sort of...
Thank you, Ms. Warren. Go ahead, sir.
Harry Norton, and I'm from Iroquois. I've lived there for 54 years. The land in question that you're talking about, maybe it's better to do a study. It was a landfill. I think you need a lot of study.
Ms. Warren?
There is an existing closed landfill just north of the property, and as part of the plan of subdivision application, that would be when all of those items would come out, and we'd be requiring further studies on that. But at this time, we're just looking at the zoning portion of the property.
Excuse me, please, in the back, if you ask a question, then you came to hear the answer, so talking during the answer. Thank you.
Yeah, so just, just that the, all those applications related to soil and that sort of thing would all come at a later date through the plan of subdivision application. We're just looking at the zoning of the property at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Warren. Any other comments? Seeing none at this time, comments from council. Councillor Ward?
Sure, I guess my main comment is I'd like to see the estate lots stay R1H, or whatever the correct zoning is for estate lots. That's something I would like to see, and then the rest of it, based on your proposal, could be rezoned to the R4. I appreciate everyone's comments in the audience, I understand, but I think at this point, it's not the point for the comments, is when we go through the plan of subdivision, all of these comments will be taken into consideration. And as Ms. Moran said, we are looking at planning fees for the future of the cost of development. So something this council is aware of and hopefully will work towards, but those are my comments this evening.
Any others? Further question, Mr. Castle?
Yes.
Just so we all understand what's going to happen with this proposed subdivision or rezoning, so you're saying they want to go to R4, and if I understand, that's, like you said, apartment buildings, et cetera?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Can they also build detached and semis and all that as well?
Currently, at the moment, that's what the R4 zone includes, all densities in all of the other residential zones.
But when it gets changed, they can't put detached, is that correct?
No, they still could, they still could.
Okay, so you just keep adding on?
Yeah.
So the higher the number, the more things you can put in there?
Yes.
Two, three, et cetera?
Yes.
So you can get a gambit of different things, so, okay, so you could have a huge, big, from what I read, 15-meter-high apartment building of any number? I don't think there's a limit on the number of units in an apartment, is there?
There isn't, but there are building code implications. The higher you go, there are fire, fire provisions as well.
Well, it's still possible, if you got the bucks.
Still possible, but there's also site plan restrictions, there's a lot of things to consider. At this time, the applicant is just looking at getting the property zoned in order to look for opportunities for developers.
So OPG is the applicant, correct?
No.
Oh.
Doug Stewie.
That's what it said on the piece of paper I have.
OPG is the landowner.
Okay.
The applicant is Mr. Doug Stewie, he's a real estate agent or realtor.
Well, I think that should be disclosed when you send a letter out to the people. My, my letter says nothing about anybody else's name, I couldn't research him. Is that, is that proper etiquette?
The landowner is the person that's actually tied to the title of the property.
So the landowner is OPG?
Yes.
And they're changing it for somebody else?
The...
No?
We've got a representative from OPG in the audience.
Sure.
If you're comfortable.
Yes, if you'd like to answer the question.
Thank you. Good evening, council. To answer your question, OPG is the landowner, as Stephanie correctly pointed out, we've retained Doug Stewie, who's a real estate agent who represents OPG on this application. Okay? So, and, sorry, my name's Ray Davies, I'm a director of real estate services for the record with OPG. Look, we, we came with a proposal to rezone the property. As you've heard, there's a lot of study that's still required. We don't know exactly the form or the product that will actually go on the property. That's not OPG's necessarily our interest. Our interest is to work within the zoning and the official plan and the PPS and provide new housing to this community that is supporting local business. That is our, that's why we are invested in this rezoning application tonight. If council is not supportive of the rezoning, we will walk away, right? Our interest is to create new opportunities for housing in this community. And I've heard you talk about all the bad things about housing. There's a huge housing problem in the province of Ontario, and nimbyism is not a solution to housing in the province of Ontario. Looking at creative ways to provide affordable housing, diverse types of housing, is needed. So there's a flip side to everything.
Thank you, Mr., thank you. You could direct the questions to us. Thank you, Mr. Davies. Last, last, last question, and then we're moving on. It's to the applicant, though? It's to the applicant?
Through the chair.
Through the chair.
So it seems to me, and maybe I'm wrong, there, somebody's asking you to give them carte blanche on property that's abutting to a lot of these citizens, and, and it just seems ludicrous for council to say, carte blanche, build what you want, we don't care what you people think. I'd like to know what's going to be built there so I can even give a decent defense or objection.
Right, thank you, Mr. Castle. Thank you, Mr. Castle. I'll let Deputy Mayor comment and answer.
To answer that, Mr. Castle, to answer that, that is going to be forthcoming, that the details will be forthcoming.
Before we vote?
No, just be patient with me. The details of what's going to be built will be forthcoming as part of a plan of subdivision. This is just a rezoning, that's all it is. Once we get through the rezoning, if the applicant wants to pursue building residential, then they have to come with a formal application. It's a plan of subdivision. That's when everything will get unfolded of exactly what they are proposing. But first, you go through a rezoning to create that vision of potentially what could be built there. Once that rezoning gets approved, then they'll come with more detailed plans, and Stephanie or Ms. Moran, you can help me out, is there another... Is there another public meeting at that time at the plan of subdivision? So that, when the devils are in the details and when that gets unveiled, then you will have your opportunity again to come and say whether or not you like, you know, single family homes, duplexes, apartment buildings, but all of that will get unfolded as the process continues.
Thank you.
And you will get an opportunity to look at that again.
Thank you very much. So thank Mr. Davies and Mr. Stewie for attending. Thanks, Ms. Warren, for accepting questions. And I thank Mr. Castle, Mr. Allison, Mr. Norton, thank you for your questions. They are all important part of the process as we move forward. For myself and I know council, we are super excited to look at opportunities, look at developments, look at, you know, things we've talked about over our nine months intern. We've talked about tree canopy and how we can facilitate that noise, absolutely. So all the things that were mentioned is all part of, you know, strategic planning that we will enter into and be part of any planning process. But certainly do look forward to, you know, the rezoning and having the OPG and the lands have an opportunity to present what may possibly work in that area for future residents of South Dundas, which take many years for that to come to fruition. So certainly there aren't going to be structures there at any time in the near future, just part of the process as we go through the zoning. Thank you, Ms. Warren. So that will close 6A. We have 6B, Plan Subdivision Swank Construction. Deputy Mayor will excuse yourself as we. Ms. Warren?
All right, thank you. All right, so this part of the public meeting is regarding SDG File 01SDS 2023. The applicant and landowner is Swank Construction Limited. And then it is a part of vacant part, sorry, a vacant property on Rotterdam Way in Morseburg. So a request to be notified of the decision may be submitted to the municipality of South Dundas, again, myself, planner@southdundas.com, or to the United Counties Director of Planning at planning@sdgcounties.ca. This meeting is being held pursuant to Section 51 and Section 34 of the Planning Act, sorry, just Section 51 of the Planning Act. This meeting is an open forum for the public and council to gather information, ask questions and voice comments or concerns. Again, we'll go through sort of a brief overview of the subdivision and possible rezoning process if required, provided by myself, and then followed by comments by the applicant's representative. Following the presentation, there'll be an opportunity for comments and questions from the public and council and an opportunity for the applicant to address them or myself. No decision will be made tonight. So notice of the public meeting was sent to all owners of land within 120 meters of the property via first class mail. A sign was also posted at the property and the notice was given electronically to the prescribed list that's established under the Planning Act. The United Counties of SDNG has the authority to approve or refuse the proposed plan of subdivision. So staff will bring an action request, including proposed conditions, to a subsequent meeting here. And then following this public meeting and the forwarding of municipal comments, the United Counties will review all submissions made by the public and agencies respecting the proposal before making a decision. If approved, conditions are drafted to address development requirements as well as items raised through public and agency consultation. These typically include the requirement to enter into a subdivision agreement and a submission for approval of a stormwater management plan, among others. So I've highlighted here the site location. So we've got Rotterdam Way to the north and then to the south, what you're seeing is Lake Shore Drive. So this is the draft plan of subdivision that you've got in front of you. So you'll see there's eight properties and two cul-de-sacs. As discussed previously, the official plan, it is designated residential district in the urban settlement area. And then currently it's zoned R4, special exception 17. And then I've also just included the provisions for R417. So notwithstanding the provisions of Section 5.42F to the contrary for the land zoned R417, the minimum rear yard depth shall be two meters. And notwithstanding the provisions of Section 5.421 to the contrary for the land zoned R417, the minimum dwelling unit area for a one bedroom unit shall be 49 square meters. As well, it says, notwithstanding the provisions of Section 3.1A to the contrary for the land zoned R417, accessory buildings or structures shall not be located closer than 1.2 meters to any interior side or rear lot line and shall not exceed six meters in height. So there are proposed eight lots representing eight townhomes. That's a total of 32 units and they're expected to be about 1,000 square feet each with an estimated selling price of $350,000. So those eight lots make up about 1.2 hectares. And then further south on that previous plan is an additional block for future development, which is about 3.4 hectares. So the property will have municipal piped water and sanitary and it'll also contain 20 meter road right of way and cul-de-sacs. And then stormwater design and collection will be consistent with the existing approved draft plan. And then the detailed design requirements will form part of the proposed draft conditions and be held in the and bound by the subdivision agreement at a later date. So some of the comments that we've received today, Enbridge is requiring to provide any necessary easements and submit detailed plans to them. South Nation Conservation Authority requires stormwater management, stormwater management plan, lot grading and drainage plan, sediment and erosion control plan, and then an acknowledgement to obtain a permit for any interference with the water course satisfactory, as long, as well as a satisfactory subdivision agreement provisions. And basically those items are contained in that agreement. And then as well, Candid Post has their standard community mailbox comments. And then no comments from the public have been received to date. And then I've just included up again, just a closer version and then sort of the question point.
Any questions, council? Any questions? Sorry, Council Smith?
I just, I see Mr. Swank's back in the back. The original plan for this was you were going to have a couple of small apartment buildings there, but then you've since changed that and we're just going with townhomes. Is that correct?
Correct. The original plan was to go with three 16 unit buildings. Because of the escalated costs over COVID and whatnot, it's been not viable to build. So then we've decided to go back to townhomes, which will have less density because we're going to be 32 units now instead of 48.
Thank you. Excellent. Any other questions at this time? Council Ward?
So the future block is right in behind here. Is it going to be separated or is it going to be consistent in one? Because right now it looks like one block to me on this picture. Is it two separate blocks?
Sorry, it's one entire block. So block nine is the whole portion to the south. So those would be backing onto the properties on Lake Shore Drive and then these eight would be up closer to Rotterdam.
With the potential to future expand further.
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Allison?
Just to go over the situation, this is all part of the original subdivision agreement.
So this property did contain, it was part of the original subdivision agreement and it still continues to bind that property. But this is essentially a subdivision on top of a block on a subdivision, if that. So we're going through the process essentially again. Instead of being developed as one property with three buildings, we're going through the subdivision process again to effectively create the eight properties and then the block as well. So the applicant has sort of pivoted based on what the market and construction costs and implementation costs. He's sort of pivoted from the original plan to sort of meet the needs of the housing crisis that we're in right now.
So to revisit, the actual density is being reduced from 40 to 32 units?
Yeah, yes. Was it 40?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight to 32. So presumably the municipal infrastructure has been checked and has approved the whole subdivision, so there should be no difficulty as far as the municipal infrastructure is concerned.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Castle, yep, sorry, Ms. Warren, yep.
As you can see, there will be detailed design work done still for servicing coming down each of those cul-de-sacs, but that's to be done after, if it gets approved, after approval, but before any development occurs. So those drawings would be bound in a new subdivision agreement.
Thank you. Mr. Castle?
My question is, what was the initial total estimate of the total development? How many homes or families could be in there? And how has that been reduced? It sounds like 12 families, if I'm doing my math correctly. And so there was a study done, a wastewater and water study done for this proposal, I understand, from what this gentleman said here?
So there was originally, there was a study done for the 48, including the 48 units?
Right.
As part of the complete application requirements for the plan of subdivision application, they were also required to provide an updated plan for servicing and stormwater. So it's sort of a preliminary sort of brief. All detailed design work gets done if approved after approval.
So my question initially was, what was the total amount in the whole subdivision?
I mean, I don't have the number off the top of my head for the whole subdivision, but this particular block was 48, previously 48, now 32.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Warren. Okay. There's no decisions being tonight, there's no bylaws or anything at this point. This was a public meeting for information and to take consultation and for input. So thank you much, very much, Ms. Warren. Council Ward, would you please notify Deputy Mayor St. Pierre? Thank you. Okay, I have a motion that the public meeting to consider zoning bylaw amendment and plan of subdivision be closed at 6:44 PM. Moved by Councilor Smith, seconded by Councilor Vino. All in favor? Thank you very much. Anybody that was here for the public meeting, thank you very much for attending and I'll take a moment as people leave, might be a little noisy for a minute. I appreciate all the questions and comments. With us tonight. Welcome, Inspector.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Council, members of staff and members of the public, thank you again for having me this evening. I will try to be brief. I can't believe this will be my third year already presenting in front of all of the municipal councils throughout the United Counties. As in previous years, Mr. Mayor, I like to present myself in front of every municipal council, including county council. Although the process is for council to bring things through county council and the police services board, I do like to make myself available to council and staff for a brief update and some questions just in regards to maybe some more local issues that may be present. So as I've done in previous years, I certainly would like to give council just a quick update, certainly some things that have been going on in Dundas County that the Stormont-Dundas and Glengarry detachment has been up to sort of servicing the citizens of South Dundas. So certainly after our last presentation, one of the key areas that we've really wanted to increase, and it's one of the detachment challenges that we continue to have, is not just motor vehicle traffic, but we also have a lot of pleasure craft traffic out on the St. Lawrence. We have a lot of ATV traffic and we have a lot of MSV traffic when the snow does allow for. So we have seen certainly, we've certainly seen an increase in all of those. So our marine program, we continue to have two boats, one on each side of the dam, and we continue to have very active patrols, which have been very, very successful. I'm very pleased to announce to council and county council and to the police services board that this will be our sixth year running with no personal injury or serious or fatal collisions out on the water. So very, very pleased with our marine unit. We do have excellent partners also in the RCMP and Aquasocity Mohawk Police who are out there helping us as well. We jointly patrol them on a regular basis. So very, very fortunate to have those policing partners. And the residents of South Dundas, especially in this area, and the St. Lawrence benefit from those policing partnerships. We also had a very busy season with our auxiliary unit. As council is aware, our auxiliary unit for the past three years has been involved in many proactive patrols. One of the areas that I have asked them to concentrate is certainly on the waterfronts in Iroquois and in Morseburg during the evenings. So where our officers have been tied up with calls for service and maybe not able to be out on the waterfront, just sort of walking around and greeting the public, we have asked the auxiliary unit to take on that duty for us, fly the OPP flag and report back to us with any concerns that are being brought forth to them. They also participated in several food drives, which the South Dundas Food Bank is a recipient of. We are always very fortunate of all the generosity that we see those and we're very happy to see our auxiliary unit participating in those. The winter months, as I mentioned, brought MSV patrols, probably one, probably other, the other biggest thing are the changing weather patterns that we're seeing. Certainly, we're not seeing more snow in this area, but when we do see it, we're seeing a lot, much greater level of snow with heavier winds. We had another ice storm this past, I guess, late winter, early spring, which heavily affected several different areas. I know the United Counties were certainly out there and very, very busy during that storm. We had a lot of downed, we had a lot of downed power lines in the area and it was a very busy time for us. As I recall, South Dundas was a little less scathed than some of the other municipalities within the counties. But again, very lucky to have a good partner in the municipalities and also the United Counties. We were able to react very quickly. I would probably take your attention to, you know, that being our second biggest challenge would be climate change. We seem to be responding to more and more sort of climate, climate related emergency calls for service that are weather related, you know, a lot of fallen trees, a lot of people trapped in their residences that we need to help respond to, getting emergency services to where they need to go, emergency planning with the counties on how to keep the roads open and keep them accessible. To move into the, to move into the new year of 2023, as council has heard me speak about for the past three years in a row, our mobile crisis response team, we did move to present to the local health network in, for the east region. Unfortunately, our proposal was not at the top of their list. So the proposal to fund our mobile crisis response team was rejected, as you're aware, Mr. Mayor, from county council. However, county council did come forward and make the funding of the mobile crisis response team a permanent budget item line, which has significantly assisted the hospital in ensuring that they have now been able to post that position permanently and then backfill it. To our surprise, about one week after hearing that, the local health network did come back to all of us, Cornwall Police included, and provided us with a one-time $110,000 boost in funding. The, probably to even more of our surprise, they allowed us to use that money retroactively. So we were actually able to reimburse the counties. So the money came to the hospital through. came to the hospital through, the hospital, and the hospital was actually able to backdate its invoices back to the counties. So the counties were actually reimbursed. I believe it was $70,000 was the breakdown, based on the funding model at the, the health network. So we were very pleased, we were very pleased with that. And all indications are that the, in a few months, we will be back before the health network presenting again, trying to get that stable base funding. Our mobile enhancement grant did come to an end, and unfortunately, the government did not make some, did not make the announcement in time for the new round of funding. So we have made an application to enhance our grant once again with additional staffing and training. We're hoping to hear, I'm hoping to hear within the next four weeks about that. I've already received some ministry correspondence, and we're hoping to hear that we will once again see an enhancement from the ministry to bring that program. Certainly something that was very well-publicized was that the detachment held a, an anti-human day, or a day of learning for anti-human trafficking that was held at the township of South Stormont Community Centre. It was one of the most well-attended days of learning for human trafficking that the East Region has seen. We had over 200 participants. We had crown attorneys from as far away as Montreal and Quebec come and join us for the, for that day. So very well-publicized, very well-received, and that was as, as a result of another grant from the Ministry of the Attorney General for that specific purpose. So we were very pleased to be able to look after that. This year also marked something a little different for the Police Services Board. So this year, I asked the Police Services Board to participate in the drafting of the detachment's new strategic plan. So every three years, the OPP, as an organization, develops its strategic plan. And every detachment bureau and region is subsequently required to develop one as well. This year, I felt it was very important to get the engagement of the Police Services Board to assist me in drafting that strategic plan. So we did have an off, an off-cycle meeting where I invited the board to sit with me and discuss what they saw as priorities for the communities, the OPP police, and what they would like to see as policing priorities over the next three years. I was very, very pleased with the input that I got from the board, and the OPP were also very pleased to see that type of input come forward. We are, the plan is in its final stages of being approved at our general headquarters, but all intents and purposes, their feedback that I have received thus far is that it is going to be fully approved and implemented, and I'm very excited to, at our next meeting next year, to bring some of the highlights of that plan forward to council. We now move into the, and I would, I would certainly say before the busy summer months, that we did experience the very tragic death of Sergeant Eric Mueller, who was shot and killed in Borget, Ontario. Two other officers were also shot on that evening. The SDNG detachment, although it did not occur in our detachment area, was very profoundly affected. Many of us worked with not only Sergeant Mueller, but worked with the other two officers. We are very well, we are very tightly integrated. And although the call, the closest car from SDNG was sixty-one kilometers away, that entire platoon did respond to the call. So many of our officers attended the call and were there to, for some of the aftermath after Sergeant Mueller was transported away and the other officers. So certainly bring that, not as something a highlight, but certainly something that has profoundly affected not only myself, but everybody in the detachment. We had a very busy summer again, probably the busiest summer I could say since the COVID-19 pandemic. We're back to pre-2018 levels. For those of you that were out at the Tubies and saw how strong the participation was, I can tell you that I was, I was there myself later on, later on that Saturday and Saturday evening. The Highland Games, we ran out of parking, first time in ten years that that has happened. So we were very, very pleased. We were very active in a lot of the community events that occurred and very happy to, happy to see that. In speaking about some of the just general challenges that we've experienced, not only as an organization, but as a detachment, certainly, we are not immune to the recruiting and staffing challenges. The OPP has done a masterful job at continuing to promote and recruit, but we are losing about 200 officers a month to retirement. And just to give you an idea, in the last nine months, we have had seventeen new recruits join our detachment. I thought it was a bit of an anomaly. I was, I've given out so many retirement badges this year, and I finally shook somebody's hand. The last one, I said, I hope it's not me that everybody's deciding to retire. And that's, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, pending any questions from council. My apologies if that came out a little quick.
No. Excellent, excellent update. And certainly, Inspector, we appreciate you coming here. Please pass on to yourself and to the staff within SDNG. We appreciate all our officers do for us and our community. It is a shared service through SDNG. So as Deputy Mayor and myself said at that council table, super supportive and happy to hear that the crisis unit continues and will continue to fund that program. Certainly, thinking about public involvement, you, we, the boat was at the, meet you at the river event, and anytime that you can be public in a fun atmosphere, that's always great. I always feel and appreciate all the officers that are, that do that, as well as the folks that are doing the, the tours. We've had some vandalism, minimal, but we do have some vandalism and some graffiti happening within our municipality. So any eyes that are on that certainly prevent that. And I certainly want to thank you. When we have an area of concern, so if we receive a call, myself or the CIO, we pass it on to the inspector. And if we have an area of concern, and then, and they'll subtly just deal with that or let us know if there is an issue or whatever, as we don't direct the police directly, but we let them know if there's an area of concern to follow up on. So I thank you for your communications in the areas of concern we've brought to your attention and appreciate your communications when we've had a, an event of significance so that we can follow up with any residents that might ask. So I appreciate that. Questions or comments from, from the council team? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you for you, Mayor Broad. I appreciate you coming and giving us a delegation. It's nice to hear how, how much you're involved in the community. Just a couple of the things that you always just hear on the street is obviously is the speeding through our, through our communities and our small towns. It seems to be always an ongoing battle. So anything that, you know, like I say, if we can keep eyes on that would be greatly appreciated to see if we can somehow reduce, reduce that. I know that sometimes there's, there's a thought people are speeding, maybe they're not, but I, I think it's pretty evident that in my little town where I live, there's, there's some pretty good speeding, speeding that's happening along Lake Shore Drive in particular. The other thing I, I hear a lot about is, is a lot of overnight frequenting of our parks, you know, activities in our parks that, you know, if it's two, three, four in the morning, you know that they're not out there just having a cup of coffee and waiting for the sun to come up. So, you know, that's another thing that if you, if your detachment and your fellow officers can keep an eye on and maybe try to, try to purposely go around the different parks in South Dundas, just to make sure that, you know, things are up and up, and that would be greatly appreciated. So there's a couple of things I hear about quite a bit. So I know it's, it's a staffing issue, and I can appreciate it's a staffing issue, but you know, even for your auxiliaries out and about, you know, a couple of things I'd like to see if we can kind of get a handle on.
Absolutely, Mr. Deputy Mayor. And as Mr. Mayor commented, I am, I'm quite familiar with your newer CIO, Mr. Mills. He and I speak on a, he and I speak on a regular basis, and I know that our traffic, certainly our traffic management unit has been spending a significant amount of time out on Lake Shore. But in regards to the parks, we will definitely make that an area of focus moving forward.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ward?
Thank you for being here this evening. Thank you for everything you do and your, your staff as well. I just had a question, and perhaps you could, you could share it with, with staff, and then staff could, could send it to us. I've gotten quite a few inquiries about neighborhood watch and how one or a community would start neighborhood watch. So I'm just wondering, I think the OPP leads that, if you could share the resources you have for that to staff, and then we could, you know, do something with, with that, or I could share it with the people who are interested?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep, we can definitely follow up with that.
Okay. Clerk LeGrue, add that to here. Counselor Vino, Counselor Smith, Counselor Smith?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Broad. I just, yes.
Good question. Whenever you mention that you're about the, the level of retirements that you're having versus new recruits, in our area here right now, how, I basically, how short are we, how short-staffed are you? Or are you short-staffed? Is it an issue? Or like, if there are more recruits available, could they be hired? Or would you say that you guys are full? How, how would you, how would you say that?
So I, I would answer that question saying that right across the board, no matter, certainly in policing across Ontario, recruitment is a problem. Staffing is a problem. One of the problems that we have in Ontario is that the Ontario Police College is limited to the number of classes because of the rigorous training that every police service must go through, is that the Ontario Police, we are limited on the number of seats that the OPP receives at the Ontario Police College. So the Commissioner, Commissioner Carrick does have a very, very strong relationship with the president of the Ontario Police College. But that can only do, that can only fill so much for us. Now, when I say we are losing approximately 200 a month, I, I should have been, that's not just uniformed officers, because we are 9,000 total in the OPP, and that has, that is civilian, those are civilian and uniform positions. The OPP has also begun or recommenced allowing the Experienced Officer Program. So we do, we do accept lateral transfers from other police services across Ontario. So, and to answer your question with regard specifically to SDNG, I would tell you that our, we are in very good staffing, very good staffing shape. I'm very, very pleased with our staffing numbers as they are at the moment.
Okay. Excellent. Okay, thank you very much, Inspector Hemrick.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you coming tonight.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much, everyone.
Okay, moving on to our next item on the agenda. A couple of weeks ago, at our municipality staff barbecue, we recognized several individuals that had completed some significant years of service. And tonight, we are going to recognize one of our employees that has been with us for fifteen years. I'd like to welcome and congratulate Diane Svetson-Chatter on completing fifteen years with SDG, with South Dundas.
I have a certificate for you. Diane, come on in. Diane is one of our crossing guards. Which is a big job.
Make sure all the kids are safe.
Thank you.
I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving to item eight A on our agenda, Iroquois Civic Centre Architectural Study, the tender, Director of Parks and Recreation Facilities, David Janson. Go ahead, Mr. Janson.
Good evening, council. So in front of you is a report just outlining some of the tender results for a tender that just closed last week, I guess. Staff, it was included in our budget this year, and I know it was included in the Parks and Rec Master Plan. And also, you guys saw it on the facilities tour, and it was something that we had discussed is the Civic Centre is losing, it's in need of a modernization. So this is the, the very, very first step, is to make sure that we have a plan. Obviously, we can't come in and do a complete overhaul of the building. So the tender was sent out basically to, to give us a schematic design, a rough idea of what we were going to do, but also to give us phasing of the projects within it. So that's, that was an important part for me, is that the consultant had to come in and not just say, do this $3 million upgrade, but give us a plan on how to get there in baby steps, because we can't do it all at once. That's just the life we're in. So in front of you, you'll see the results from the tender. We had six bidders, some very great proposals. The, all of staff who reviewed it came into a general consensus with Bell Architect. It was nicely under budget by about $30,000. Well, 25, yeah, 25,000. So that was always nice to see. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions if any member of council has any.
Questions, comments? Well, this is great. First step to making plans is, is get a study done. So Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, thank you to you, Mayor Broad. So we're going to have community input to this plan as well, David, I'm assuming?
It wasn't really in the plan, but stakeholder plans.
Stakeholder?
So we'll have anybody who uses the facility regularly is who would be probably looking for in that.
Yeah, I, I would recommend that. I think we need the stakeholders in the community plan. I mean, it is a community building. I think we should, we should, as part of this process, form some side, a couple people, two, three people to kind of assist with the, the vision of the, the building would be my recommendation.
Very good. Any others? Seeing none, I have a motion that council accept report PF2023-14 to award tender PRF23-12 Iroquois Civic Centre Architectural Study and Schematic Design to Bell and Associates Architectural for a price of $15,800 plus HSD. Moved by Counselor Ward, seconded by Counselor Vino. All in favor? Carry. Moving on to eight B PF2023-15 Iroquois Waterfront Lighting Project. Mr. Janson?
So thank you, Mayor and council. So this is a follow-up to our July 10th, the recommendation from the Iroquois Waterfront Committee that day came through to council, outlined the plan, the costs. The next step on it was to get the project tendered in the two phases that we'd outlined. We didn't quite meet the August deadline. We had to leave enough time for the bidders to get some time in. So we're here at the September meeting. We did have seven and eight bids. I'd argue very competitive, quite good bids, some great local bidders. You'll see in the budget breakdown, I sort of used, what was the breakdown from Mr. Ross there, showing all the phases and his estimated budget, and then the actuals that we got from the tender results. So you'll see, I did speak with Mr. Ross and went through everything with him. His donation amount is going to remain the same. He has a contingency to cover any of his in-kind donations. So if there's any fluctuation in price there, he'll be covering it. And then, so the net result is, the lights will be installed, if there's no issues, at a total cost of $1,500 and minus some change in there to the municipal taxpayer. Staff did recommend, because we are doing it as two separate tenders with different contractors, and there's some other miscellaneous costs that we might incur. For example, I'm going out there tomorrow to stake out the 42 locations of the lights. I got to buy 42 stakes. Little costs like that will come up, especially with the two separate contractors. We might have some gray areas that isn't covered between them. That'll fall under us. So I put a little contingency cost in there, just, especially with it coming under our anticipated budget. It gives us a little bit more buffer to make sure that we have room to make sure the project's done right. Outside of that, everything's outlined in the report. If anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Excellent. So super pleased for the Waterfront Committee to see this project moving forward and that we have a generous donation from the community for this. Questions or comments? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor Broad. I appreciate the report. David, the only, the only question I would have, the one bid was significantly lower than, than the other bids. Is there any concerns with the low, low bidders? Maybe you talked to them?
I have, I have spoke to the low bidder and had a conversation with him, and he seems comfortable with the scope of work. And from there, we're protected. It's, the scope of work is defined in the tender, and he bid on it, so.
Okay. Laws are protected. That's, that's the main thing.
Great question. Thank you. Seeing none others, I have a motion that council accept report PF2023-15 to proceed with the Iroquois Waterfront Lighting Project as outlined, awarding section B to Contra SCS Limited for the price of $42,680 plus HSD, and section C and D to Steve Baird Electric, Inc. for the price of $23,325. Moved by Deputy Mayor St. Pierre, seconded by Counselor Ward. All in favor? Carry. Eight C PF2023-16 Giant Tiger Merle, repair. Dr. Janson?
Thank you, Mayor and council. So in front of you is a report outlining a little bit of repair work that we'd love to do on some of the local murals that municipality has. This, the owner of Giant Tiger did reach out in July to me, and I've met with him. I've also met with Mr. Gleed, and then I took some time. Again, this is another one I was trying to sneak into August, but I was trying to get all the pricing together, and it took a little longer than I was hoping. So here we are in September. As you can see, there's photos of the existing murals. Staff have been out, looked at them. I hope some of council was able to swing by and take a quick look at them as well. They are starting to degrade. The one on the west side is certainly end of life, and I would say the one on the east side is a year or two away, and that might be being generous. So after reviewing them, I'd recommend that we, we start the repair process. You'll see-
You'll see, we did have $10,000 in the budget, and we have been putting $10,000 away. We haven't really done many mural repairs since the one on Morseburg Public School, which I wasn't here for, it was about four years ago. I did include some links in my report, so you can see, I must say, Mr. Gleed, my compliments to him and the volunteerism that he's going to put forward of his time to do this. I think he's probably saving the taxpayers a great amount of money by, he has all the images, he does all the digitalization, he makes it into the photos that we can print. If we had to pay a print shop or a professional photographer or somebody to do that, it would be an added cost to this project, a project that I didn't think the end cost would be as high as it ended up being. So my compliments to him. This timeline for this project, as you can see outlined here, I'd like to get it all ready over the fall and winter this year, so I can sort of jump into it in the spring. Mostly just because, one, as I mentioned, Mr. Gleed is a lovely volunteer, but I don't want to come to him and say, you have two weeks to do this work. He's volunteering his time, I want to give him as much time as I can, and I think that takes some pressure off him. Outside of that, you'll see some of the costing on the back. The murals surprisingly get expensive very quick, but they, when you stand up beside them, you start looking at how many sheets of plywood there are up there, it adds up pretty quick. For that reason, you will see that we did note the one on the west side, both the store owner, Mr. Gleed, and myself all agree, 33% of it goes beyond the parking lot there, and you can't really see it. So we're recommending just making it smaller. Yes, we'll come in and have to repaint some wall as a problem. Once you take it off, you'll have two different colors of wall. But overall, long-term, it's going to be cheaper, and I think we're going to end up with a better mural. Outside of that, everything's in the report. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them. But the plan is to get this going now, whether we'll spend all the money this year or next year, but it's, I'd love to get the panels in my hand sometime over the winter months without putting too much pressure on Mr. Gleed.
Thank you, Director Janson. Questions, comments? Counselor Vino?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Huge proponent for preserving the seaway history, and the murals are a big part of that, so I'm a fan of this project. My one question, just for the public and whatnot, is it's obviously deteriorated, it's plywood and whatnot, now it's rotten. I saw the pictures, and I went and checked it out. We're switching to, in the, in this model, switching to aluminum panels and inked on mural instead of a painted on plywood, I assume is what that was. What's the life expectancy? I know you can't really speculate too much, but what would you think?
Honestly, I, through you, Mr. Mayor, I am really happy that I'm coming into this project, and we have the examples in Riverside and on Morseburg Public School to look at. The Riverside one was done seven years ago now, and I drive by, and it still looks phenomenal. I will say it is north-facing, whereas the Morseburg Public one is south-facing, but they seem to be holding up quite well. And I expect these aluminum panels, we're looking much further in their lifespan. It's the same panels that are used on our historic signs and everything else, and their lifespan, from what we're seeing, is much better from a deterioration point. I think we're more up against UV versus the print. Which is hard to say how that's going to deteriorate versus not deteriorate.
And I suppose in the future, we could reuse the panels and reprint them and carry on?
Hopefully.
Okay.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other? Counselor Smith?
Yeah, I saw in the report here, we have, was it 15 total or approximately?
I think, yeah, I think we have 12 murals.
12 total. And there are, they are like, so they are all plywood, which means they're all, if they were all done close to the same time, which means...
They're all going to need to be replaced, pretty much, all at the same time.
Pretty much.
That's...
So, yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. In my discussions with Mr. Gleed while we were there, him and I proposed at a less busy time for me and a less busy time for him, that him and I would go back out on tour and go, he's, he has a passion for the murals, and I'd go back out on tour with him and take a look at it, and then we can start prioritizing which ones come next. And I don't want to speak on anybody's behalf, I did put it in the report. The day I was writing this report, Mr. Robinson, Keith Robinson leaned on my door and mentioned that the Lions Club was preliminary, starting to discuss the, what I know is the Jug City mural over by the end of the Pincus Plaza. I, all I know is Keith has leaned on my door and talked about it once. Where the Lions Club is going to go from there, I don't want to put any pressure on them, that's completely up to them.
Excellent. Yeah, and any community partners that fund some of these projects is excellent, right? And it's a place where somebody could donate money against as well, something that's visual and longstanding in the community. And I echo what Counselor Vino said, important part of our history, and I'd hate to see them be taken down. So replace them as we go. It's great. Any other questions or comments? No, thank you, Director Janson. I have a motion that council approves the restoration of two municipal murals located on the Giant Tiger in Morseburg, that the funding for the restoration project be utilized from the reserve for funding, supply, installation of these. Counselor Smith, seconded by Counselor Vino. All in favor? Carry. Moving to 8D CS 2023-05 Rail Safety Week Proclamation. Clerk Lebrun?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Broad, and through you. Before you is a report or an action request. We're looking for your support for Rail Safety Week, being held the week of September 18th to the 24th. So I've been in contact with CN Rail, and they provided this support resolution. Rail Safety Week is held every year across Canada, between the 18th and the 24th this year. And considering we have CN Rail running right through our municipality, this is just a formal way where we can educate and inform the public about rail safety, including the right of ways, public awareness of the dangers associated with, with crossings, making sure pedestrians and motorists are looking, and things like that. So we'll be working with our communications coordinator to, I guess, use our social media platform to help promote this important week. So we're just looking for council support on this.
Yeah, excellent. Certainly have my support, comments? I have a motion that resolve the council municipality of South Dundas support the National Rail Safety Week being held from September 18th to the 24th, 2023. Comments? Deputy Mayor? Sorry. Motion by Deputy Mayor, thank you. St. Pierre, seconded by Counselor Vino. All in favor? Thank you very much. And thank you, Clerk Lebrun, for bringing this forward and, and making that. 8E 2023-06 St. Lawrence Medical Center, request for contribution. Clerk Lebrun?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Broad. So before, before you is a request regarding the St. Lawrence Medical Clinic. So as we're all aware, we have a clinic downstairs, and there's also one located in Ingleside. They will be participating in a job fair recruitment in October. This event will bring together communities, but also they will, the recruiter, so by being part of this job fair, they'll have an opportunity to interact and network with first and second-year residents. This is a job fair that the residents have to actually attend when planning their future on where they want to locate, where they want to work. So St. Lawrence Medical Clinic has asked if council would help with the cost of this registration. So South Stormont and South Dundas would like to split the costs equally to be able to support their attendance at this job fair.
Thanks, Clerk Lebrun. Yeah, and I've been a participant in several of the recruitment sessions. I've been with some doctors, with some potential recruits in the past nine months, as we try and attract medical individuals to our community. Super important, super supportive of us, you know, saying, hey, we're here, we want to, we want to help in this way. So I'm supportive of the 325. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, I have a motion that council of South Dundas accept report CS 2023-06 and at the 325 be issued to the St. Lawrence Medical Center for partial cost of the registration fee to participate in the Department of Family Medicine Job Fair. Motion by Counselor Smith, seconded by Counselor Vino. All in favor? Carry. Thank you, Mr. Lebrun. Okay, so coming up with 8F, FS 2023-03, 357, 358 Tax Write-offs. With us tonight is Tax and Utility Coordinator, Amanda Alexander. Welcome, Amanda.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. There is a report in front of you for Section 357, 358 Write-offs. These give the property owners the ability to apply for a write-off or reduction in taxes, depending on their situation. These different reasons are noted in the report, so depending if the portion of their property is eligible for, because it's been reclassified in a different class of real property. The land has become vacant land or excess land during the year. The land has become exempt for taxation during the year. A building on the land was razed by fire, demolished, or was damaged by fire, or other buildings on there have been demolished. I won't read off all of the, all of the different ones. So these applicants provide these applications to the municipality, and then we forward them to MPAC to provide us with an estimation or an amount for the write-off. So our current budget for 2023 is $60,000. And part of that budget, we have spent $21,291.12. This is from some of the applications that are brought to us, or they're not from applications, they are from write-offs that are provided to us from MPAC, such as properties that were classed as residential but are changed to farm class rate. So the list of properties that are in this report, some examples of why they have applied are their property has changed the use, so gone from commercial use from a previous owner to no longer a commercial use of the property, or a building was demolished, or a building was razed by fire.
Sure.
Our cost is, the cost to the municipality is $2,164.56, and the total cost of the write-off is $5,691.12. So part of that is the county and the school board portions, and they are portioned back to the county and the school boards.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Alexander. Questions, comments? Pretty standard information, standard low amount. Lucky enough, it's a lucky low amount. So that's good. Seeing none, I have a motion that council accept FS 2023-03 to approve the municipal tax write-offs in the amount of $5,569.51, according to the property classes as per the attached. Moved by Counselor Vino, seconded by Counselor Ward. All in favor? Carry. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Amanda. Excellent report. Okay, moving to bylaws. 9A Iroquois Property Lighting Foundation Installation Agreement. Director Parks and Rec Facilities, Director Janson. So I have a motion that the bylaw be to execute an agreement with Contra, the Waterfront Foundation be read and pass and open council, signed and sealed. Moved by Counselor Ward, Counselor Vino. Carry. Now the lights can be installed. Thank you very much. Under 9B Don Haines Municipal Drain Branch 1 Engineering Maintenance Costs, Deputy Treasurer Sean Mason. Is this Counselor Smith, or you're going to excuse yourself?
Or BNC.
BNC, okay. Thank you very much. Go ahead, Mr. Asa.
Thank you, Your Worship. Bylaw 2023-70 is a bylaw to assess engineering and maintenance costs for Branch 1 of the Don Haines Municipal Drain. The cost totals $73,189, and have been allocated by the assessment schedules adopted by council on August 28th, 2022. Application for the Agricultural Drainage Infrastructure Program Grant of $20,872 was made in this past April. The grant applies only to maintenance and repair activities. There is no grant available for Section 76, work performed by the engineer. There are 20 properties with a total assessment amount of less than $10, which won't be invoiced, and the invoices will have a due date of October 31st. Answer any questions you may have.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, I have a motion that bylaw 2023-70 be a bylaw to assess the engineering and maintenance costs of Branch 1 of the Don Haines Municipal Drain be read and pass and open council, signed and sealed, moved by Counselor Ward, seconded by Deputy Mayor St. Pierre. All in favor? Carry. Continuing Mr., I guess we're going to go to, oh, we're making a change here. Chris St. Thomas, welcome.
Good evening, everybody, Mr. Mayor. So we're here for the third reading of the bylaw 2023-54, which is to adopt the updated assessment schedule for the Don Haines Municipal Drain and Branches, including Hess Creek. This council had given first two readings at the August 15th council meeting this year, so we're just looking for the third reading.
Thank you, Mr. St. Thomas. Most, questions? Seeing none, I have a motion that bylaw 2023-72 be a bylaw to adopt third reading, Section 76 Engineering Report of the Don Haines Branches, including Hess Creek Municipal Drain, be read and pass and open council, signed and sealed, moved by Counselor Ward, seconded by Counselor Vino. All in favor? Carry. Thanks, Chris. Deputy Mayor, do you mind? Under bylaw 9D 2023-73, proposed amendment to zoning bylaw 2010-48, the OPG land, which we had a public meeting for earlier. South Dundas Planning Assisted, Stephanie Warren is here to answer any further questions council may have. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you to you, Mayor Broad. I did have a couple of comments. I just, you know, I wrote down some of the questions and concerns that were brought forward. First of all, I will say that the public that was here was very respectful. It was nice to see that, opposed to the first one we had, which was a little bit more contentious. Just a couple of things that were said, and again, Mr. Castle is not here with us anymore, but these are just kind of broad questions or broad comments. He had said, he talked a little bit about the cost of development, and I just want, you know, just, I think I should just discuss this a little bit. So the cost of the actual development, so the placement of the roads, the servicing, the lighting, utilities, and all the application fees, that's borne by the developer themselves. It's not borne by the tax base. There is, yes, he is correct. There is a cost to, to operate and maintain our services once it is all developed and it's handed over to the city or to the municipality. But I think we have to keep in mind that there is just as great a cost, if not a greater cost, in not developing, and a greater cost to our existing tax base if we don't continue finding ways to grow our communities, whether it's a residential, whether it's commercial, whether it's industrial, or whether it's institutional. We always have to look at ways of growing our community, look at ways of growing our tax base, so we can, so we can relieve some of the burden as a whole, you know? And I'm not saying that we need to develop into a city, but I don't think the, any of the applications that I've seen come forward to date is unreasonable. These are, these are lands that are already zoned residential to begin with. So I don't think it's unreasonable that, that we are seeking more development in, in South Dundas. There was a comment made about the cost of our existing capacity study that we are, we are going to be completing. And yes, I understand that there, there is a cost to do that, but I kind of look at that cost as it's, again, it's a cost to develop our communities. It's a cost that the municipality is willing to put back, so a developer, again, for a commercial, residential, institutional, or industrial, that the information is readily available for developers to come in and understand what kind of servicing capacity we have upfront. Yeah, it's a cost to us, but I think it's, it's a cost for development. It's a cost that, that's needed, and I think this study is needed. So I'm still in favor, favor of that. The other one little comment I'd have to say, and Ms. Moore, you kind of said it, but just to clarify, we have not had any formal discussions about development charges. We haven't had any discussion whatsoever about that. It may, may or not be forthcoming. So I don't want anybody out there thinking that, hey, we're imposing development charges. It's something that was very lightly discussed. It's something, there's, there's been no motion brought to the table to date, maybe there will be tonight if I keep going, but there's been no motion, there's been no formal discussion. So until such time, as a formal discussion had to be, quite frankly, I don't want to discuss and kind of put that out. discuss and kind of put that out there, because I think that's given a little bit of maybe some false information that, again, until it comes to our table, I think it needs to come to our table first, and then we can go from there, sorry.
Yeah, I was just like, just on that particular note on the development charges, some communities have them, today we do not.
Correct.
So it was something we should always think about.
Think about.
For sure, and that would be where it's lied so far.
Yes.
Entering into our strategic planning in November and new budgets into two thousand and twenty-four.
Yeah.
So I agree with you totally on that.
Yeah, so anyways, just on this rezoning application, I also agree with Counselor Ward, what she said. I do believe that when the details come forward, that this application, with any application, needs to complement the existing residence, or commercial, or industrial, or I keep saying the same thing, but institutions, but it's got to complement what we have here. And it's no different than, and I'm just going to speak on the Swank, just the perspective of their layout. Stewart Drive has single-family homes. Swank Construction developed that project where it's backing onto new single-family homes, and then the density kind of starts inside of there, so it's a kind of a progression. And I do believe in that type of development. I think it should be a progression. I think that they should respect the existing residents. I do believe there should be some buffers. And so I think with all of that, I mean, it can be, complement the existing residents, and I think, in my opinion, this is something that is still quite needed with the housing need. We see all of our other communities around us grow. There's a reason why they're growing, and now there's a reason why people are starting to, or developers are starting to think about South Dundas, is because we're the next hub. We're the next hub. So just with that, I just felt like I wanted to say that, and I'm in favor of this rezoning.
Counselor Vino?
Just echo a lot of the points is that, and this is for the public's sake, this is just the rezoning. That's, this has nothing to do with what's going to be built there. This is just for the purpose of rezoning. So in that case, I'm in favor as long as we do keep the R one along the.
Grove Street.
Grove Street. I would be curious to see what the depth of those new, those R one lots would be. I think Mr. Allison asked that earlier.
Yeah, I, it is not actually on the concept plan. Usually concepts are general in nature. Looking at what they provided based on the scale, there is a taper. It could be anywhere from sort of thirty to fifty meters depth. When we receive a formal application, that's when it'll be required that they provide a more certain value on how deep those lots will be. But we do, in zoning, we do have, there is some wording at the beginning of the bylaw that allows us to sort of give it a little level of interpretation.
Okay.
And a zone does always start and end in the middle of a road. So regardless, that first strip would go to the center of a potential future road.
Okay, that was going to be my thing, is if we rezone it now, and, you know, they come with a planned subdivision, and it's not quite deep enough, and then we've got to go through another zoning process, so that's, I guess, what I was more, but yeah, I'm in favor of it, and I look forward to seeing what they come up with for a draft subdivision plan, and see how they can merge it with what your quality has.
Excellent. Counselor Ward?
Comment from earlier, same as my peers around the table, about the R one H remaining, like mirroring Grove Street. My other comment, and I noticed it actually just brought it to my attention, we were looking at the subdivision public meeting, is there, the Swank subdivision has a limit on height, and I just want to make sure that we capture that on the R four, because I looked at the fire chief, I'm fairly certain we don't have ladder trucks, correct? Right, so I just want to, I don't want to put us in a position where we're allowing that, because that is quite an expense. So if we could add something to that accord, I don't know if that has to go back to the applicant, or if this council wants to discuss it further, that's fine, I just, there's no limit right now on the height, so I just don't want to give false impressions to the applicant that, you know, a twelve-story apartment building was something we could service.
I believe there is a maximum height in that zone.
Okay.
Didn't include those provisions in it, but I do, I can quickly pull those up. I do believe it's probably about fifteen meters.
Okay.
But it is something that we can look at, maybe even in the subdivision design guidelines, and we do have some opportunities coming forward with.
Yeah, Mr. Castle actually mentioned that in his, the reading he had done on the bylaws, so.
Yes, yeah.
You can mention that height.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that it's in there, so if it is, that's great. If not, I just want to make sure that the applicant's aware that there is a height restriction, that's it, so, thank you.
Counselor Vino?
I was just going to say, whenever you go to do the planned subdivision, it still has to meet what we can service as a municipality, right? Like, if they were to pull a building permit for a thirty-meter building, if the municipality can't service it, they can't get the permit, I would expect.
We have a, there's a few ideas and other projects that we've looked at. There are, there are ways that we can maybe enter into an agreement with a neighboring municipality that does have access to a ladder truck, just for service at that specific property, if that's an option, but that's something that we would look at when we get any sort of proposal moving forward. Now, this form, there is a holding on it, you know, it's possible we could get a severance on this. I say planned subdivision because in order to actually rezone it, we do need to be thinking methodically about how we develop this property. So depending on the options that are presented to us, and they have already engaged STANTEC, it's possible that there is another creative opportunity that we haven't explored yet, so I just want to keep that sort of open. But really, you know, you talked to Deputy Mayor Saint Pierre about, you know, the opportunities for residential, and the idea of constructing a complete community. That doesn't mean that residential puts an ultimate strain on the tax base, but it does mean that there are opportunities for other industries, which, you know, that is where a majority of our tax dollars do come from, are the industry and commercial properties. So there is a little opportunity to sort of see that sort of, you know, sort of Iroquois sort of round out a little bit more.
Excellent, thank you, Ms. Moore. Okay, so excellent, appreciate everyone's comments tonight. Certainly, I think any developer and ourselves, we would take those comments, because they were like in design phase, some of the comments we heard, so tree canopy and noise, I've already mentioned, these are all things that, yeah, that we would expect developers to build into their plans, so certainly all things definitely to consider. And just to repeat Deputy Mayor Saint Pierre's comments, the water study is for all of the residents of South Dundas to know what our capacity is, what industries we contract, et cetera, et cetera, so it's not based on a specific development that we're proposing or thinking about. It's for all our residents to know what our capacities are throughout the municipality. That being said, I do have a motion, the council approve proposed amendment to zoning bylaw two thousand and ten dash forty-eight pertaining to the subject lands, part one lot, registered fifty vacant land, SDG County Road Two. Moved by Counselor Vino, seconded by Deputy Mayor Saint Pierre.
Mayor, point of order.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, just, I just have a quick question. So are we approving the R four for the entire area through this bylaw? Because that's how I'm reading it.
No, the, if you look at the photo provided, you'll see that it's, there is a strip that we leave R one.
Okay, perfect, sorry, thank you, appreciate that.
Excellent, want to make sure we are clear.
Sorry.
Nope, that's great.
No, I just wanted to share, sorry.
And I do have the bylaw here, two thousand and twenty-three, and it does show that, Counselor Ward, just, yep, so in the bylaw itself, it does show that, it's ever approved. Okay. Okay, all in favor? Carried, thank you very much. Looking forward to the next potential steps on that property. Consent agenda. Large lists of, oh, sorry, we'll move on to boards and committees. So under ten, ten A, council representatives, any, I know it's summertime in August, probably not any meetings withhold, okay. Moving on to eleven, consent agenda. So under eleven A, Fire and Fire Services Statistics, B, Building and Bylaw Statistics for August, C, Drainage Update, D, Rita Saint Lawrence Board Appointment. So in the moments, John Allison has been replaced by Mayor Jason Broad on the Rita Saint Lawrence Board of Directors, and I'll give a full report at the next council meeting. And we thank John for his nineteen years of service, and we'll be recognizing him at the next RSL meeting in October. Under E, SDNG Regional Waste Management Working Group, minutes from the Morrisburg BIA from July, Minnesota South Dundas Iroquois Lawn Bowling, Letter, Letter Municipal Affairs on Housing, I, Letter Minister of Agriculture, Food Affairs, Deadstock Funding, J, City of Hamilton Amendments to Green Belt, K, South Nation Golf Tournament, L, Ministry of National Resources Reforestry, M, Ministry of Infrastructure Red Tape Reduction, N, Township for Puelich, Short Term Rentals, O, Resolution Town of Amishview Violence Against Women, P, Resolution Municipality of Saint Charles Retax Sale Process, Q, Resolution for the Municipality of Saint Charles Re-Federal National Housing, R, Resolution City of Cambridge Highway Traffic Act, S, Resolution Peninsula Counting Provincial Planning Statement, T, Resolution Township of Greater Madawaska, Women of Ontario of Say No, U, Resolution Township Echor Peligio Regulation Framework Digital Platforms, V, Resolution Village of Merrickville, Wolford Proposed Provincial Planning Statement, W, Town of Plymouth, Wyoming Municipal Freedom Privacy Act, X, Resolution Municipality of South Huron Municipality Freedom, Y, Resolution Town of Killaloo Re-Municipal Freedom Act, Z, North Homeland County Use of Long-Term Care Funding, double A, so this is me, we're at twenty-seven, Township of EMO Re-Black Ashtree Classifications. I have a motion that all the items listed under General Consent Section of the Agenda be adopted as presented. Counselor Ward, seconded by Counselor Smith, all in favor, carried. Seeing no discussion items for tonight. Want to make sure I have this in the right order, okay. Under notice of motion from last time, we had school bus arm cameras, so I do have a resolution to read. Okay, to you, see how we do here. Whereas almost eight hundred and twenty-four students travel in about sixteen thousand school vehicles every day in Ontario, and according to the Ministry of Transportation Statistics, the rate of vehicles blowing by stop school buses is over thirty thousand times a day. And whereas the Ontario Province passed the Seaford School Zone Act in two thousand and seventeen, which authorized the use of automated school bus arm camera system to detect incidents where vehicles failed to stop when the school bus was stopped and the stop arm extended. And whereas the Associate Municipalities working behalf of the Ontario Municipalities made a submission to the Standing Committee on the General Government, May twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen, a supportive administrative monetary penalties be used to collect fine revenue for school bus stop arm infractions and other applications, including automated speed enforcement technologies deployed in school and community safety zones. And whereas police resources cannot spread any thinner to Highway Traffic Act offenses throughout municipalities, and whereas administration and financial costs to establish the requirement municipal administrative penalty program under the Highway Traffic Act and its regulations of substantial and may be out of reach for small rural municipalities and have insufficient amounts of traffic to generate the required funds to offset the annual operational costs of a municipal administrative penalty program. Now, where therefore it be resolved that the council of the municipality of South Dundas urges the provincial government to require all school buses to have a stop arm camera installed and paid for by the province for the start of the two thousand and twenty-four school year, and underwrite the cost of implication and ongoing costs of administrative monetary penalties. And further resolution be circulated to Premier Doug Ford, Attorney General Doug Downey, Minister of Education Stephen Legacy, Province Opposition Parties Matthew Ray, MPP, and EMO. Have a motion to accept this resolution. Counselor Ward, seconded by Counsel, Deputy Mayor Saint Pierre, all in favor, carried. Thank you very much, Counselor Smith, for bringing forward school bus arm cameras, and we'll continue to talk that safety area as it's back-to-school month here in September. Do I have any notices of motions? Counselor Ward?
So, thank you, Mayor. So through you to council, I am, this is, seems poorly timed now that the deputy mayor has already spoken about it, but I was, I was curious if staff could bring back a report on how development charges work and how surrounding municipalities are using them with regards to development. I want to be very clear to the public that this is not me saying that we're going with development charges or trying to do that, it's just trying to get more information about that, so, just so that we have a little bit of information going into budget season as well, because I do know that there has to be a study done, we can't just set random rates, so I'm hoping a little bit of information can come back to council at some point, and we can discuss that and learn more.
Yeah, there's all rules and regulations, it's not like we can just set a fee, there's rules around that. So that's good for us to get training and understanding of what that entails. Any others? Okay, fourteen, ratification, a bylaw two thousand and twenty-three seventy-four being a bylaw to adopt, confirm, and ratify matters dealt with by resolution be read and passed in open council, signed and sealed, moved by Counselor Ward, seconded by Counselor Vino, all in favor, carried. And I have a motion that council now adjourn to meet at the call of the chair. Deputy Mayor Saint Pierre, seconded by Counselor Smith, all in favor, carried. As we bring a close our council meeting with the team and staff and several residents this evening for Monday, September the eleventh, I thank you for everyone that has participated here live or is watching us online. I'd like to thank anybody working in the school system. We have school bus drivers, which we just did a resolution, and certainly we recognized Diane Chattertonite as one of our school crossing guards, are super important, back-to-school time, and recognize all of those that work in that industry, and certainly our safety, and we talked with the OPP tonight about speeding, so they all go quite hand in hand. Looking forward, lots of events throughout the community over the next couple of weeks, Apple Fest and Harvest Fest, to name a few, so thank you for all those volunteers, and until next time, I give everyone a good night.